Thank you. Good evening. It's 5 o'clock here in Orno and 11 o'clock in Germany. And we are starting the Monday, October 7th, 2024, meeting of the Orno Town Council. Roll call shows we have Counselor Baker, Counselor Powers, Counselor Kenny, Counselor Demerit, Counselor Larway, and Counselor Marks attending in person. I mean, everyone but Counselor Marks attending in person who's doing this remotely. So, good evening and welcome, everyone. And Agenda review, this is the time in the meeting. Item two is agenda review. This is the time when we go over items that have been referred to committee, table items, and then have a discussion among the councilors in terms of moving things on the agenda, adding things to the agenda, asking, clarifying questions. So, under referred to committee, we have three items. A public safety building discussion that we will attend to after our new fire chief starts October, do they start October 21st? That's been referred to the full council for a discussion. We have a council approval and limits for spending order. That was item 2464, and that's going to be referred to the Finance Committee for discussion. We're going to talk a little bit later on today about committee charges, committee assignments, charges, and schedules. And we have the old fire station disposition, no date selected, that was also referred to the Finance Committee for discussion. We have no items tabled. And item C is agenda review clarifications. Does anyone have any questions about the agenda before we talk about moving things or adding things? Seeing none? Any suggestions that we add something, any suggestions that we move anything on the agenda? Counselor Kenny?
Are you asking for removing things from the consent at this point?
No, let's do that when we get to that. Yeah, that's a good way to do it. Thank you. And then, is there anyone who wants to add anything to the agenda? If we add anything to the agenda, it has to be done by unanimous agreement. Okay, that closes item two. Next item up is approval of the minutes for September 23rd, 2024. I would take a motion to put that on the table.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You're tracking that, right? Any discussion, suggestions for the minutes for October 23rd, 2024? Good. We'll take a roll call vote to approve those. We're going to see Counselor Larway.
In favor.
Counselor Marks.
In favor.
Counselor Demerit's in favor. Counselor Kenny?
In favor, and I just realized now we're going to be doing this for months, aren't we, Sarah? We're going to be roll call votes for in favor.
We can move them faster if we don't, you know, just kidding. I meant last time. Yeah, I know.
Counselor Powers in favor.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote in favor of the minutes from, thank you. Item four is public comment. This is an opportunity for Orno residents, or really anyone, to have, speak with the council about anything not on the agenda. We ask that if people are free to talk about councilors directly and council operations, but we ask that we don't talk about town personnel by name. Does anyone have a public comment for the Orno Town Council? Here we go, Darren. Thank you for joining us. If you could introduce yourself and where you're from, or where you are in Orno?
It's fine now? Okay. Hi, my name's Darren Martone. I go to the university there. My major is history with a minor in geography, and I am the appointed, student government-appointed liaison for the town of Orno, also Old Town. But yeah, I will usually come in person, but if I'm really busy, I'll just look online. But yeah, I'm usually in here whenever you guys are. Thank you, and I hope to have a nice session with you guys.
Have a nice. Thank you, Darren. And Darren was part of our, was with us last year and part of the search committee for our new town manager. So Darren, we appreciate your service, and it's nice to have you back in town. We look forward to working with you. Item five, any more public comment? Anything online? Nope, all set. Members of the public who want to talk about items that are on our agenda will be introduced once we put things on the agenda. So when we have an agenda item, we'll have it introduced and then open up the public comment before the council's discussion. Presentation and discussion items. We're going to have a discussion or presentation from MJ Sedlock, the producer. Is that the?
Sure.
Of Orno Arts Fest? Thank you, MJ, very much for being with us today.
Thank you for having me. Do we have my slides, Mitch?
Awesome.
Great, well, thank you for having me. As I said, I'm happy to give this report about how the festival came together. It was fast and furious to put it together, but I'm really proud of the result that we have. You can see on this opening slide here some of the images of both artists and audiences enjoying the festival. We can go to the next slide there. I won't spend a lot of time talking about our schedule of events. Hopefully, most of you were able to participate or at least be aware of what we did. But just generally, we had music concerts at local establishments on both Friday and Saturday nights. There was a Kids' Day all day on Saturday with story reading and a circus performance and a music artist and lots of interactive activities for the kids. An artist market on Sunday in the Pine Street parking area. Three signature events, one each day of the festival. A musical retelling of "Make Way for Ducklings," an improv show by The Focus Group, and a multimedia juggling show called "Enter the Fish Tank." And then Tango Maine at the Keith Anderson Center did an open session of lessons and demonstrations as well on Friday. And I'll just point out that there were three events there, the ones in orange text, the signature events that we did charge a ticket price for. Everything else was open to the public and free to the public as part of the festival. So, moving on to the next slide, I'll just briefly look at our revenues and expenses. I think most of note on the revenue side is that the town of Orno's funding of the festival was the majority of the income for the festival that funded our activities at a little over 57% of the revenues. We also did pretty well with sponsorships from local businesses at 26%. And then ticket sales and a small fee that was charged to artists at the artist market rounded out the other revenues. On the expense side, over 50% of the expenses were in artist fees. Money paid directly to artists for their time and talents in performing as part of the festival. Other large expense areas were in advertising and intangible materials. And then smaller categories were insurance, hospitality, printing. And the small one that doesn't have a label on it is merchandise. A small amount of t-shirts and stickers that were put up for sale and also provided to staff and volunteers to wear and promote during the festival. On our next slide, we'll look at the attendance at the festival. I wanted to give some recap of the attendance that we had, though this slide, it's hard to, it's hard to put it up there without context. So I'll just share that, you know, the tallest bar there for 250 attendances for the concert series, but that represents eight concerts over two different evenings. We estimate about 250 people saw one of those concerts. But you know, then right next to it, Tango Maine only had about 10 in attendance, but that was one event on one evening for three hours. So you know, we're not really comparing apples to apples there. Kids' Day, about 100, but that was over a long period of time. A circus, a story reading, a music concert, all of those things factored in. Market took place over a five-hour span of time. And then the three signature events at the end there, if we combine those together, they'd have 125 of people in attendance for those three events. And so, you know, it just takes a little bit of context, I think, to put those numbers into perspective there. But I think the big takeaway is that across all of those events, we estimate a little over 600 people saw at least one thing as part of the festival this year on one of the three days. On the next slide, you'll see a summary of the artists that performed or presented with the festival. The largest portion of artists were with the market. Over 30 different artists demonstrated or presented or sold their visual art items at the market. And then six performers in six different groups, I should say, performing in eight concerts with the concert series, two performers with the Kids' Day, and then our three signature events groups. On the next slide, I would be remiss to not acknowledge the work and support that I had in sponsorships and marketing. The logos are on the right-hand side there of the businesses who financially support, or entities who financially supported the Arts Fest. And I partnered with Jen Brooks of Eventful Communications and Melissa Garrity of MCG Creative, who were instrumental in helping to secure those sponsorships and ultimately market the festival so that I could focus more on the logistics and artist support and audience experience aspects of the festival. Next, I'd like to turn to a little bit of a discussion of what I'd like to or hope to do in a 2025 Orno Arts Fest. From a timeline perspective, I'm hopeful to begin planning very shortly after this meeting and identifying sponsorship goals and opportunities, and then beginning to pursue those partnerships and sponsorships at the beginning of the year, right, as folks are setting their budgets for the year. Hopefully, by March, that would allow us to have a good sense of what sort of financial support we'll have from different entities. And we'd begin to start booking artists and creating a schedule for the festival over the next two months from there, finalizing that schedule in May, and aiming for a proposed 2025 dates of June 20 to 22, a Friday through Sunday. Again, that moves the festival back to a more traditional timeline for when Arts of Palooza was at the end of June, which was just not possible given the timeline of when I started last year. But I do think is with vacations and other, July is such a busy time that the end of June is a better time for the festival. And so I would propose moving it back to that time. We would plan to continue and expand the concert series, the Kids' Day, the signature events, the market, all of the components of this year's festival. I do have a goal to try to get sponsorships and funding at a level that would allow us to make the signature events free to the public as well. I do think that while 10% of our incomes were in ticket sales, it was a barrier to attendance at these events. And it's something that I would like to see us be able to offer for free so that more people see these really great and unique art forms that they might, I just think people didn't take a chance on it when there was a ticket price associated with it. I'm also hoping to offer some new things, such as a showing of a made-made film, maybe even a premiere, if we can find an artist to partner with, a finale concert to finish out the weekend. Tentatively, we've been talking about with both the Bangor Band and Orno Brewing Company about bringing the Bangor Band to their beer garden and doing a big concert in that space with a really popular local artist in a space that's big enough to really support a festive kind of finishing concert. And then also looking at some additional art forms, such as stand-up comedy, authors, muralists, maybe an interactive community art thing where we're making an art piece with the attendees of the festival as part of it. And then also a logo design competition to have a unique Orno Arts Fest 2025 logo that features an artist in and of itself. Other goals would include increasing the footprint to more venues, maybe putting something in Webster Park, more restaurants, things like that. I'd love to develop a more intentional approach to increasing the diversity of the artists that we have as part of the festival. We'll need to increase the volunteer role in order to continue expanding and continue having success in the festival. And then increasing sponsorships and partnerships, so all so that we can do all of this while maintaining a fair and thriving compensation for the performers who participate. And so, in summary, on our next slide here, I'll just briefly mention some things about my vision and mission for the Orno Arts Fest, you know, overall, which is that audiences will come to know that they can come to this festival and expect art and performances that are innovative, diverse, and high-quality. There will be content that's there for all ages, and they'll be able to see a mix of new artists and local favorites when they come. And on the same token, artists will be able to expect things from this festival, including venues, equipment, and support to be able to give their best performances, fair compensation that reflects their time and talents, and an experience that increases their prestige, reputation, and recognition the same as it increases the festival's prestige, recognition, and reputation. And so, in order to do that, on my final slide here, my request of the town of Orno, hopefully, is that you will continue supporting this festival financially, allow the use of facilities and tangible resources, such as the Keith Anderson Center or all the way down to just some folding chairs and traffic cones when we need it. And also increasing the visibility of the Orno Performing Arts Center. Many patrons, both from Orno and from the region, really struggle to find that venue, both physically and online. And then also, if there is interest, I'd welcome any volunteer support from council or other town-affiliated folks to help make that festival weekend a success. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, MJ. Has any members of the council have questions? And we have an agenda item on this. Will you be with us when we have the agenda item?
Yes, I will, yep.
Yep, Counselor Baker?
Real quick, you had mentioned town resources. You didn't have to pay for rental for like Keith Anderson Center or anything, correct?
I did not. Tango Maine already had an arrangement for that time slot with the Keith Anderson Center. And so, it's on there, but I did not request any of those things prior. And it wasn't that I was denied or that I had to pay for that. I'm just putting it out there that if in...
Makes full sense. I want to make sure that we're...
There were no charges or anything for that.
We're not charging ourselves.
Yes.
Perfect.
Right.
Any other questions?
I do, Dan.
Thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciated that you, I mean, we worked hard. This council worked hard to address an opportunity in last spring and really appreciated your response to our RFP and how professionally and quickly you came together to put together an event that I was proud to have supported and I certainly enjoyed attending. So, thank you.
Dan, I do have a question.
Sorry.
Gesticulating, but I probably wasn't talking loudly enough. I'm getting used to this Zoom thing. I did have a question. I had two. Well, maybe one is more of a comment. I just was happy to see the flagging about maybe some kind of larger event in Webster Park. I've heard a lot of people over the years lament the concerts that used to happen there that haven't happened for a number of years. We do have a great concert series behind the library, which is terrific, but it's a very different space. And I've heard people in town asking for something that would be a bigger event that would enjoy that riverfront park again. So I was glad to see that. And my question was on the date chosen in June. I'm aware that in the past, I think, with Arts of Palooza, there was an attempt to try to hit the weekend that was like immediately after school got out, so that the public schools got out, so that people hadn't yet perhaps dispersed to other summer locations. And I'm thinking that the 20th is going to be at least a full week after when school gets out. So I wondered if you could speak a little to that date and whether there might be a possibility to move that back a weekend earlier.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to that. I don't know that, like, I don't have a kid in the public school, so I'm not as intimately connected to that calendar. And so, I do know that was the reasoning for the choice of Arts of Palooza. And I think that choice of being the weekend after school often was the third week. I thought I was choosing that weekend. So if you're telling me that the school is ending a week earlier, then I'm happy to move a weekend back.
I think it's June 13th, and 2025 is the final day of school on the calendar that I've seen at the moment. So just wanted to flag that.
Okay, well, I have, other than this slide presentation, that date has been floated to no one and nowhere. So I will do my research to make sure I know when the school calendar is ending and will adjust accordingly if that is the case.
Counselor Kenny?
Yeah, I had, I'm just curious how much, like, because I have a question on the date and I have other thoughts. And I had, I had come with a different motion to collect more community feedback, business feedback, before we commit to doing this. Now, with that said, I don't want to do that. I really, really appreciate your presentation, your motivation, and your energy is awesome. So I kind of feel now like I don't want to step and get in the way of that train, to be honest. But one of the things that was kind of tugging at me was, we've now, we used to have an Orno Festival Days, and I think everyone really enjoyed it. And it was from, you know, the 10-month-old or the brand-new baby up to the 100-year-old. And it really brought, it really hit everyone. And we also did it in the fall, so we would have some college students creeping over, not creeping over, sorry, you know, coming over and partaking, which also was a nice, nice element. So back, I didn't know if we're going to get into the timing, but June, I mean, I, there's a few other things. We used to do a 5K. We used to do a cakewalk. They did all sorts of things like that that I think are really, are really kind of more community-building. I mean, this thing, the event was awesome. I think I made it in one of the pictures even, so. You got my vest side in the back of my head. But, so, but I think that it's worth considering capturing those sorts of elements and the university being back. And, you know, they're not going to come over in droves, I don't think, but it is, it is a nice, that element was really nice, I thought, too. It was, and that was just a one day, so we've done, we did that. It was a one-day kind of into the afternoon. Sometimes there'd be a band at night, I think. And then we did Arts of Palooza for many years, and that was one night. So we tried this three, and I think you did an amazing job for the, you know, 15 minutes you had to plan it. But, and I can tell already, it'll, you're gonna, it's gonna be amazing, more amazing even next year. So, but I would like some consideration about the fall and about how we bring in businesses. You know, they used to basically put their wares on the street and that sort of thing. And I think that builds a lot of community, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I know that a lot of that was more for council discussion than directly to me. But I will just say that I did not include in the report because I'm not sure I'm prepared to commit to it yet, but there has been some discussion about, you know, doing like a Orno Arts Fest holiday edition or an Orno Arts Fest like university takeover at different times of year. That would be a limited event that could continue some of the momentum of that through. And so I think if that was a component of a festival that happened in the fall or something like that, I'd be super interested in participating in that. But if there's an interest from the town, the community, the council, in moving an event like this all the way to the fall, I'm super supportive of a larger community event like that. I'm just not your girl for that, you know? In the sense, for both the reasons that my background is in the arts and like I have no experience coordinating a 5K or some of these other elements. And I work full-time for the university, so the summer is my window, you know? And so, if there is an interest in shifting resources to something that's broadened beyond the arts, I'm super interested in how my expertise can be a component of that. But I would not be able to fully spearhead it in the way that I am right now, both from an expertise and a time and logistics perspective of that. So I would respect that decision from the council, but this sort of thing is very uniquely in both my time and expertise, you know, window.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I think often it ended up being that some groups maybe sponsored the 5K. And I don't know, Rec ultimately ran it, and different groups got involved and people like that.
I've heard a lot about Orno Days from lots of different folks as I was putting this together. And there certainly seems to be enthusiasm for something that is community-building festival that extends beyond the arts. And that's for you all to figure out, right?
All right, thanks. That's a good line of demarcation. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else for MJ? Great. Thank you so much. Really do appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is item six, public hearings. And we will first have an open and public hearing to consider a victual's license for Big Shoe Incorporated DBA Subway, 53 Main Street. So pretty close. Feel like we're there.
All right. Hello, everybody. Patrick Estey, Code Enforcement Officer, and recommendations are based off police fire and our town clerk. Our inspections have been completed. Paperwork is in, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you for that compelling presentation. Any, I like to find ways to tease Pat a little bit different every time he comes. Any comments from the public on this public hearing? Any questions or comments from the council? With that, we will close public hearing A and open public hearing B to consider a victual's license for Big Shoe Incorporated DBA Subway, 10 Stillwater Street.
Thank you, Dan. So inspections are completed, paperwork's in, and we are recommending approval.
Any comments from the public? Any questions or comments from council? We will close, I got to start banging this gap. We'll close, that's it? We'll close public hearing B on Big Shoe Subway, 10 Stillwater Street. Next, we will open a public hearing to consider amendments to the town of Orno's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Land Use, Article 4, Zoning District, Section 18-106, Schedule of Uses in Article 5, Performance Standards, section 18-130, Excavation, Removal, and Filling of Lands. I guess for a presentation... Oh, Isabel's here with us. Thank you. The screen is not, thank you. Isabel, will you give us a presentation on this, please?
Yeah, I...
And introduce yourself for folks.
Yeah, so my name's Isabel Exley. I'm the towns planner. I don't have a formal presentation prepared, so I'll just sort of walk you through this. The council did discuss this item back in a meeting in early September, as you all are aware. The amendment here is mainly to Section 18-130, which is related to excavation, removal, and filling of lands. There is a minor amendment to the table of allowed uses in Section 18-106 of our land use ordinance as well. Essentially, the intent here is to exempt projects within the university zoning district from some of the performance standards in Section 18-130, thereby exempting them from site plan review, but only in cases, and in my memo, I have this underlined three times, only in cases where they wouldn't otherwise be required to obtain site plan approval from the planning board under that land use table. So, for example, in some cases, the university is trying to build patio or doing some earthwork or removal that would end up triggering the requirement to come get planning board approval under 18-130, but isn't a use or a building that would otherwise require that sort of review by the planning board. The issue here is that once something is reviewed by the planning board, it has to come back every time there's an amendment to the approved plan as well. So that's both burdensome for staff, but also the university. And then we are made aware that the university is upping its capital projects this year. And so, just in the last few months, before this amendment came before you in September, we had received a number of inquiries from representatives of the university who, you know, whose projects wouldn't otherwise trigger any sort of review because they're outside of the 500-foot boundary that we would typically require them to come to planning board for. But they were doing enough earthwork that would end up triggering that requirement. So that's just overly burdensome on your one part-time town planner and your volunteer planning board. But also kind of isn't necessarily in line with the theory behind requiring a certain use to obtain planning board approval, you know, understanding that we already have a list of uses that we have deemed impactful enough to the surrounding community or to the surrounding zoning district to require planning board review. And that somehow, at some point, since this was adopted, it has sort of expanded to include many more projects that we have not otherwise deemed impactful enough. I think I'll end there. So just to clarify, the only thing that's changing is none of the allowed uses, just the requirement that if you wouldn't otherwise trip planning board review under the excavation ordinance, you aren't required to go. And otherwise, if you are, you know, within the 500-feet barrier that we've set up under our current zoning ordinance, you wouldn't be required to come to planning board review for, I will say, the majority of uses within the university zoning district. There are some uses that are impactful enough to require full planning board review, regardless of where they're located.
Okay. Isabel, I see you've muted yourself, so I'll take that as the end of your presentation, so thank you. Opening up, any members of the public who'd like to participate in this public hearing? Any questions or comments from, well, the town council? Clint, when do we envision this coming back for approval?
45 days.
30 or 45?
Oh, it's 45 days. I am new, but I'm pretty sure it's 45.
Okay, so sometime in a meeting in November, perhaps, we'll get, and that'll be when we discuss it.
If not, early December.
Act on it. Great. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the presentation, and we'll close the public hearing. Thanks, Isabel. See you Wednesday, coming up?
I'll be there.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a, that's a quick plug for our conference of plan, town hall, open forum. Okay, I'm sorry, I would take Rob's thunder. All right. Turning to acknowledgements, we'll start with Councilor Larway, then move to Councilor Marks.
So I'd like to acknowledge all the work that Isabel Exley has been doing on the comp plan process. There's a great website for anybody who hasn't been following so far the process that Isabel created. It's ornocompplan.mysocialpinpoint.com. You can find it through the Orno Town website. So you don't have to remember that. If you look on the town website, you can get a link to that. It includes a link to the survey that we really want people to fill out for the comp plan. You can also see stuff on the wall. We had a, a community, uh, open house that Isabel organized this past Saturday, and there's another one this Wednesday at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in these chambers. So I know this is sort of a plug, but it's also acknowledging just like this is a lot of work that our town planner is doing and really caring about getting public input to make sure that our 10-year plan for this town is as robust and community-informed as possible. So I guess just, that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Councilor Marks?
Uh, yes, I think I would just like to acknowledge our staff who do all the work to make the digital participation in meetings possible for community members and also for me. Thank you. It's really a lot of background time. Thanks.
Skip me, Leo?
I would acknowledge our amazing staff and volunteers that are getting ready the vote for November 5th. I know I've been in there a couple of times doing different things, and it is just a buzz. So acknowledge all of their hard work and effort, and wish them well in the, in their, in their Super Bowl on November 5th.
Great. Councilor Powers?
I'd like to acknowledge the people who came out on Friday. We had a great time. We had an event where Eric DeSilva, and I don't remember Paul's last name, he was up here, and we were looking at the Route 2 corridor, just in this small area, and, and some changes that were concepts that were, that we have looked at and just discussing with the different members, so, of the town. So thank you. I see a couple of them who are here. So thank you for coming out for that.
Council Baker?
Hockey is back. It was good to see the restaurants and, and everything full on Saturday. So hopefully we will have a good season again.
How'd we do? We won, right?
Yeah, a lot.
Okay. I would, I'd like to thank, I'd like to acknowledge the, we had some amazing news for the school department this, last week on the, the Netchy ratings with Regional RSU 26 being rated the number one best school district in Maine. That's hard work and well-deserved and no accident. I think we're really proud of the work that our, our partners on the school board do and all of our educators in Orno do. And these, you know, ratings go up and down and year to year and things like that. But it's clear that we have one of Maine's top school districts in, in our community, whether it's number one or number four or number eight. And I, it is hard work, and I wanted to acknowledge that. And thank, thank the team for all that they do to provide our education for our kids. Thank you. I can't believe that made it all the way to me, by the way, for, but I get it. Next up is the consent agenda. And this is an opportunity that we vote on these items and block, and, but it's an opportunity for either anyone in the public or any council member to, at this point, ask to have something removed from the consent agenda and taken up as a action, a separate action item all, all on its own. Council Kenny?
Can I have 24223 removed?
Twenty-four.
Two-two-three.
The last one? Okay.
Yeah, just understand, I, I'm not familiar with, with what it is, or.
Okay.
Would like to understand it.
Fair enough. We'll move that to the end of the action items. I don't think there's a lot of folks waiting for that one, so we'll do that, do that at the end. It's kind of a logistical one, but happy to discuss it. Any other changes? Anybody want to see us vote on these things one at a time? No? All right. If that, that being the case, I would take a motion to move the consent agenda orders 24217 through order 24222.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, and we'll do the roll call. Council Larway?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor. Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. That's probably my favorite part of the meeting in terms of moving stuff. Next up, our action items. So we will move these things onto the floor, ask staff or whomever to make a presentation, open it up for public comment, and then close public comment to have a public discuss, to have the council discussion. So can I get an order and a motion on order 24224, an order authorizing the expenditure of $7,000 from the council contingency account for MJ Sedlock to organize the Orno Arts Fest 2025?
So moved, seconded?
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Any, from the public first?
So you start with the public.
Yeah.
Historically, we've started, I thought we've started with us and then public.
Yeah, I read the charter a little more carefully.
Were you doing it backwards?
Yeah. That's right, right, Sarah? That's what it says. Yep. So we're getting better. It's continuous improvement around here. Any members of the, is there, we don't have a presentation per se, right? Because we heard from MJ already today, the discussion. Any members of the public on this? Any council discussion?
Just to kind of jump back in.
Sure.
Where I was. I really would like to, and, and I guess now understanding from MJ, in my mind, I was like, all right, let's marry these things and let's do it all. But that, that makes sense, what her response, and I, I don't want to give up on a Orno festival-type event. So we'll keep it separate. I have no, I'm not looking for any revised order. But I do think from a community-building event, there's nothing, we haven't, we haven't hit that like the Orno Festival Days hit.
Yep. No, I understand. And I appreciate hearing MJ's points, too. I think that's important. So Council Baker, do you have something for us?
Yeah, so I was also going to make a very simple amendment to say that the funds were spent on a combined event. But then MJ said she wouldn't do the combined event, so, or didn't have the capacity. I, and so I, I, I think the Arts Festival was great. It was very well done. I also like Leo and, and some others would really like to see us do more of a, a combined event instead of, we, we, we've only budgeted, we only have the money for one event. So I, I would like to see it a more combined event, but that doesn't seem as, as easy as I originally had planned in my head.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to, as far as budgeting, there was a, we, there was at some point $10,000 put into, uh, put into a budget for, we called it Orno Festival Days. Now it's, it maybe it's more, maybe it hasn't. But maybe it wasn't this past year, but I was just looking at previous meetings. And it, it was put in there at some point. And the other, I think, element to that is that is run by staff. I think also, you know, I'm not suggesting that performers shouldn't be paid, but it, but it was, it was a different event as well. I think some, it was people looking to be, just to be out, to get out playing, maybe not professionals, if, maybe, maybe these current people aren't professionals either. But it, I think just the whole community aspect of it. I, I don't know where the, necessarily how many, how much funds are required, but I really do feel like the way, I really do feel like if it's a $3,000 or $5,000 expense, we, we've, I mean, we just approved $20,000 worth of signs two weeks ago or a week ago. So I, I just don't want to suggest that a $5,000 community event, $5,000 would be the limiting why we can't do it based on, I guess, some of our other spending. So I, that's my take on that.
I would respond to just, I think it's, it's worth us maybe exploring. I mean, it's clear that this maybe, it should be separate from, from this proposal. But I'd be very interested in, in us exploring further at another meeting, the possibility of funding some sort of Orno Festival Days again.
Go ahead, Council Baker.
To clarify, so the $7,000 as part of this order, those are the funds that we set aside for a public festival as part of the budget?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, too, and Clint, I don't mean to put you on the spot for it, but is there a, was there, because you weren't here when we passed our budget. Next year at this time, it's all, you're gonna be.
No, I looked over your budget, so from what I could see is there's a $10,000 allocation from the council for events.
Yeah.
But there's not necessarily designated for the, you did not say for MJ's specific event here. Didn't name them.
But this order says from the contingency. Those are act, that's actually part of the $10,000 that we set aside.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
So should we amend this to say from allocated event funds instead of the contingency fund?
It was allocated to the contingency. That's how it showed up in your budget.
Okay. So, all right, then you had, good. All right, it sounds like we're ready to go?
I just want to say, I'm super excited to see the event, Orno Arts Fest, continue and to expand with MJ's vision. And I think it takes somebody a vision to put on any event, whether it's a Orno Festival Days, or whether it's some sort of arts festival. And we have somebody who's got that vision and got that. And if somebody here has a vision for Orno Festival Days and they need to spearhead that and find the volunteers and, and the people who want to work and do it, that's what, or, or some, some vehicle for that. And, and that's where you have a leader who steps up and says, yeah, I want to do this. So thank you, MJ, and I'm ready to vote.
We could also amend our committee assignments later to assign our incoming counselor to run the, refer the Orno Festival Days to that. But teasing for those who are running for the Orno Town Council. But, all right, so we'll, we're gonna vote on this. The, the vote is to authorize the expenditure of $7,000 from the council contingent account for MJ Sedlock to organize the Orno Arts Fest for 2025. Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Thank you. Council Demerit is in favor. Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote. And congratulations, MJ. Thank you. And bang it. You want me to bang it? This is for Darren. That passes unanimously. Next up is order 24225. You're gonna remind me on the one we moved. Okay. Order 24225, order authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with Haley Ward of Bangor for probable cost of energy efficiency options for the town office that it costs not to exceed $7,500 from capital infrastructure to establish a scope in which to provide a budget and timeline that can be used for the Climate Action Grant, December 2024 application. And I would welcome the town manager or his designee to present a presentation on this.
And we can answer questions. Bill Cody's here as well.
Oh, great.
He's part of his, it's in his budget. This is enough money to look at the efficiency of our building.
Should we move it and second it before we get to?
That's right. Let's do that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. I got a lot, you got, you know, it's a lot going on. Mr. Cody?
Bill Cody, Public Works Director. So what we're doing here is we're taking $7,500. We, when I worked at the school, we did something very similar. We'll have an engineer come in and, and give us an idea of what we need to do and what the cost is gonna be. This is gonna be part of the energy audit. It's the same company did the energy audit. This is about a $75,000, what we're gonna get out of it, if we can get the, get the funds. Megan Hess is doing the majority of the work in the background. So we do have the money in the budget, $7,500. So it's not like we're pulling it out of anything. We already got it in one of our budget lines. So, and everything we have in here is circa 1995. So, and this was the number one building they actually, they picked out that said we should be going for the money. Last year, we didn't get any money. They went to towns that didn't receive any funds. This year, we're hoping we're, we're gonna be able to get it. We need to have the documents in before December. So that's why we're coming to you folks.
Okay. That's the presentation part. Any comments from the public? Any questions or comments from council? Okay, we have an, I'm looking for Sarah. No, no wave, no hand. So we'll move on to the vote. This is to authorize the town manager for $7,500 for the capital infrastructure piece with Haley Ward. Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Demerits, yes. Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Favor.
All right, that's unanimous. I was gonna catch him up. Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is order 24226, an order accepting the recommendations from the nominations, evaluations and council policies committee on, on schedule and structure and charging the chairperson to assure the inclusion of said report in the 2025 town manager goals process and authorize the town manager and council chair to begin implementing the recommendations. Council Marks, would you like to lead the presentation?
Moved.
Council Larway's gonna move it.
Second.
Council Powers is gonna second it. Council Marks, would you, now that it's on the table, would you like to lead the presentation?
I'm happy to speak. I don't have an organized presentation. We talked about this, I believe, two weeks ago. In pretty much detail as a council, I'm certainly here to answer questions. This was a working group put together by council that met for eight times, an hour each, looked at an extensive list of questions in order to attempt to accomplish the five goals that council had set for us. And these are the recommendations that we have coming back. So I would pretty much just open the floor if there are questions from the public or from council. I would like to point out that, I would like to suggest that we do take a close look at the committee charges, which I believe are in attachment F on page 26, slightly into page 27. In addition to just any questions at large, because we are about to appoint people to these committees potentially in the next order. And I do think it's important that we've looked at those before we're appointing to committees. That's all I have to say, Dan. I'm gonna turn it over to questions.
Thank you. And any member, Clint, you want to participate in the presentation before we open it up to the public?
I just want to outline, there'll be an email, but Council Marks did share out, there were some reference pages that would need to be corrected within the document. There was one, two, three, four, five. We'll be doing those, and this will be made available as part of it. Nothing was substantive, just more of references to which pages and where to look. Just wanted to make sure that there was, those were acknowledged.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from the public? Council have any questions or comments?
I guess I, I would just say, as one of the members of this committee, that for anybody who, for whom this is the first time you're interacting with this, basically this, this small committee met to figure out how to restructure council meetings and workflow, how things are going to staff, how things are going to committees, how we structure the committees, so that as part of this, not every counselor is on every committee. So the whole council isn't meeting every week on this. It also changes it so that the council will be meeting twice a month substantively to take votes. Hopefully this will create a situation where the public and counselors who are incoming have a much clearer idea of how work is happening on the council and how decisions get made. As part of this, for, per what Sarah had just said, committees have been changed a little bit. In particular, what has, has been the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee, which I've been the chair of, although we haven't had much work last year, is proposed to become the Ordinance Review Committee, which will not only be assisting the town in implementing the comprehensive plan implementation, but also in systematically reviewing town ordinances on a regular cycle, so that we're keeping things up to date. I just think that's probably, I mean, that's top of mind for me because that's my committee, and I'm about to be, if we approve it, become the chair of it. But I also think it's probably the most significant change to committee charges outside of the actual creation of the ongoing standing nominations, evaluations and council policies committee. I know that's a lot of information, but I just thought that might be helpful context for everybody, especially in the public who maybe haven't read this.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And I just, I want to thank the committee members and the, and the staff who spent, those meetings are online, I believe, on the YouTube channel as the recordings are. And it was tremendous amount of work. And I know, I'm really grateful for all the work that went into it. And I'm looking forward to working with Clint and all the other counselors to, to make this a part of how we do things. So thank you.
Dan, what I also say, so that actually is a good point. Where you can find these meetings if you want to listen to hours and hours of these, very exciting meetings about policies. They are audio recordings that are available on the town website. So no video.
No video.
That's what you're looking for.
Okay, we'll move the question. Council Larway?
Uh, uh, for the vote?
Let's vote now.
In favor.
In favor. Council Marks?
In favor. In favor.
Councillor Demerits in favor, Councillor Kenny?
In favor.
Councillor Powers?
In favor.
Councillor Baker?
Enthusiastically in favor.
As a member of the work group, thank you for that. Alright, uh, that's a unanimous vote on Order 24-226, and again, thank you for all the work. Order 24-227, order appointing council members to the following council committees. I'm gonna read, I'll read them quickly, Community Development Committee would be Matt Powers Chair, Dan Demerit Member, and we will ask the newly, honestly this time, we'll ask the newly elected councillor to, to serve with us in that committee. Um, there's a special election on November 5th to fill that seat, that Sonia Bertholz vacated. Um, Finance and Operations Committee would be chaired by uh, Councillor Jacob Baker, members would be Leo Kenny and Sarah Marks. The nominations, evaluations, and council policies committee would be chaired by uh, Councillor Marks, and would include Councillor Lawrie and Councillor Baker. The Ordinance Review Committee would be uh, Councillor Lawrie as Chair, Councillor Kenny, and Councillor Demerit. Um, can I get a motion to put that on the table?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any comments from the public on whether Matt and I should be on the same committee or anything, nope. Um, any questions? Council discussion, uh, we got feedback, an email feedback from almost everybody on this. Um, so I don't know if anybody is surprised by what they're seeing here, um, but if, speak now or we're gonna vote, you have to just, yeah, alright. Okay, if there are no um, no comments or changes from members of council, uh, let's vote on it, Councillor Lawrie?
In favor.
Councillor Marks?
In favor.
Councillor Demerits in favor, Councillor Kenny?
In favor.
Councillor Powers?
In favor.
Councillor Baker?
In favor.
Excellent, that passes unanimously, and we're moving on to order, now that we have a Community Development Committee, we're moving on to Order 24-228, this is an order assigning the Community Development Committee to assess town ordinances regarding neighborhood noise regulations, rental unit registration, large gatherings on private properties, and disorderly property, and report back to council. Could I have someone, uh, a motion on this one?
So moved.
Moved, could I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I suppose this is something for me to present, um, since I'm the one that, that moved it. Um, I'm moving this order because we have a, we have a collection of ordinances that as I read them, seem to be pretty well thought out, and have a good opportunity for enforcement, um, and, and opportunities for send a message about expectations in Orno's neighborhoods, uh, but we seem to have, it seems to me, we seem to have a a disconnect sometimes between awareness of these policies and, and how we enforce them, and opportunities to you know, engage with residents about what our expectations are for behavior in our neighborhoods, and I've had an opportunity to hear from um, meet directly with, with um, residents in some of our neighborhoods who are concerned, and I've had an opportunity to talk with some of the property owners in town, and for me, this is a chance for us to just kind of look into these ordinances, have a conversation about them, and better understand um how people can, how people should be engaging with them, um, when they have concerns, and potentially what needs to be changed moving forward. If, if we don't think that they're achieving the right, the right result. So that's the presentation. Um, and I guess I would ask if there are members of public who um, have questions or concerns or want to be heard on why there's a need for this kind of um, conversation, we'd certainly welcome, welcome the chance to hear from you tonight. Okay, Councillor Baker?
So what do you um, envision the outcome of this? This review will be, or um, is this just simply a, making sure that the ordinances, you know, kind of check all the boxes, do what we think they do, or will there be, do you envision further action outside of this after the review?
Yeah, I, I, I envision us, the assessment, kind of understanding how members of the public interact with these now. I don't think we've ever gotten, in, in my time on the council, we haven't gotten reports on how, like the nuisance property, I, I don't know. We haven't had, you know, reports on how those, how um the number of those that we have, the numbers of any kind of data in terms of how people are engaging with them or awareness of them, um, we haven't had same thing with the noise ordinance, and I would like to understand kind of how the public, our ordinances are very much, seem to me, rely very much on, and kind of our our community standards, rely on people being willing to en, engage with their neighbors, ideally in a very, you know you know, relationship building kind of way, but confronting problem behavior when it, when it arises, and we rely on our neighbors, our, our neighborhood residents to report that behavior, and there have been instant, instances where the behavior gets, you know, emailed to us as councillors, which is not the starting point for these kinds of conversations, and it gets, or it gets posted to the neighborhood Facebook groups or in the listservs, and those aren't great places to start these kinds of conversations. So that's how I, I think about it, I think, I, I don't think people are, you know, we it's like, we have speed limit signs, but clearly we have to do more than just post a, a speed limit sign to, to change behavior, and you can set the expectation without targeting, but just set the expectation and then um, utilize the tools that we have to.
Yeah, yeah, and so, you know, the point of that question is, and ultimately, you know, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, or, or yes, I just I, I want to be cognizant about turning, uh, turning turning singular issues into big council projects, I just want to be cognizant of staff resources, council resources, uh, et cetera, so um, that was my.
Yeah, and I think that's hopefully kind of what the committee structure allows us to do, so it's a, you know, it's some meetings and that can be scheduled at times that are convenient for staff, and it's not, you know, an hour on a Monday, where we're all here, so that's kind of how I think about it. We could alternatively just ask the town manager to report to on us, give us data and stuff like that, but I'd rather have an opportunity to engage stakeholders in the conversation. Oh, Councillor Marks, go ahead, sorry.
Go for it.
I'm sorry, Rob, it's a time lag here, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, I just, I wanted to say that in response to Jacob's concern, I do think it's important to note that these discussions are actually sort of an ongoing project that years ago, at least in the Webster neighborhood, was started by um, town staff with the neighborhood, there were extensive discussions and some new ordinances I think that were created at that time, although I may be slightly off on my timeline, but there was never really um, follow-up back to the neighborhood in a really organized, structured way with um, kind of a report back that was promised to the neighborhood, and I, I do think it's important that we continue this conversation through to sort of answer certain questions. I also want to point out that in the kneecap recommendations, there's a suggested committee referral form where one of the things as a council were asked to do would be to identify what questions we're asking a committee to answer when it reports back to us. Um, and I think it'd be great if councillors have specific questions, for me, I would like to have the data on how the ordinances are currently being used, how many reports are happening. I would like to know sort of in general, do we think they're working? And um, can they and are they being enforced, or are there problems sometimes with enforcing them? Um, I'd like to know how many people know about them in our community, I think in most of my neighborhood, people actually don't know about them. Um, and if they don't know about them, how do we make it known, what, how do we publicize that better? Um, and then also do any of them need to be amended, based on discussion with staff about whether they're enforceable and how they're working from a staff perspective? And also with community members about how they're working from a community perspective. Um, those are just mine, but I think it is important when we refer things to committee to be clear that any question that we're wanting answered as a council, you know, gets stated out loud, so the committee knows kind of, you know, things we'd like to hear back about.
Do you, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I mean, uh, I, I don't have too much to add to that, it's basically what I was gonna say is just that I, I I like the specificity of Sarah's questions, I don't really have any questions to add to that, I would just, you know, say I'm fully in support of making those the questions that we refer to the committee.
So I, Dan and I have had some, some back and forth about this, and I'm, I have concerns about how we've arrived here and where this is, I mean, to me, it feels like there was a, there was a noise complaint in a neighborhood. And this comes back to having a discussion about our roles as councillors, and I think this is a, this is an example of a good example to use, in that it, it feels like we had, we had a um, a noise complaint. In my mind, that goes to the town, that, whether it comes to one of us councillors or not, it gets referred to the town manager. Then town manager through staff work to resolve the issue, and if the issue is not resolved or not resolved satisfactorily, you know, and again, but it's not instantaneous that this stuff happens, it's instantaneous if there's something going on and the police need to roll, obviously. But aside from an overall policy and sending out notices, disorderly property and all that stuff, this isn't an overnight process, and I feel like we've, as a board, as a council, have inserted ourself way early in this process, that the idea is that we have, we have those four policies in place, and all those questions that Sarah just asked, I think, get, get answered if we let the process let it, let it follow the process, where staff enforces it, great, and if it works, it's done, we're not running through this exercise of, okay, somebody called, let's, let's review all these policies around this, and that's, that is what we're, what we're doing without without letting the process work its, work its way through and letting staff do their job, council do our job, and again, I think our job at this phase is to pass this on and let staff take care of it.
I appreciate where you're coming from Leo, as far as responding to this particular incident, if it was just one, but I think we've, we've all known for years and heard for years about this as an ongoing issue of people not knowing how to engage when college students in neighborhoods, um, who I think have every right to be there, they're, they're part of the neighborhood, but often aren't as thoughtful about how to be neighborly, how to be respectful of the people in, around them, and vice versa, how other people can engage with these college students to bring them into the community, I think there's a number of elements to this where I recognize that if this was just an isolated incident, you, you might be right, we're responding very quickly to a, a single call that maybe should go in, in another channel, but I think this event was more of a catalyst for us to I think finally have a more focused look at a, an, an issue that has been ongoing for years, that I think, I mean, I I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn to say, that I, I think we're all aware of it on some level. So, I, I, I don't know, I think this is a, an appropriate use of council time, to be, or going over these things.
To your point, Rob, yes, this, this is the, kind of, this has been going on for years, and that's obviously how those count, those policies have been developed over time, um, so I think, and, and they're not perfect, I'm sure, and, and quite frankly, and my guess would be, there's some of them that aren't even legally enforceable and may break, you know, may, may not stand up if, if pushed, but.
All the more reason for us to be reviewing them.
But if they are in place and staff has a jo, has the job of resolving conflicts, not, we do not.
Oh, I don't think we should be inserting ourselves in this particular issue necessarily, other than making sure that staff is, I mean, doing what staff is probably already doing. Um, and again, I'm, I, I think this is more about us having a larger discussion about our role as the legislative body of the town. What are the laws currently on books, how do they relate to an ongoing issue that residents are facing? And is there something to be changed, are there things, are, are they working just fine? I think that's questions that Sarah laid out, were actually really effective questions to get us good information about our job, which is to, to pass ordinance, um, or to amend ordinance. Um, I think that's, it's almost uh, the perfect example of something that we should, we ought to be doing as a council.
I guess, and maybe I'm just stuck on how it used to work, but historically, staff would come to us if there was an issue that they couldn't accomplish what needed to be accomplished because of policy. So for us to, I guess, all Sarah, again, all Sarah's points were very valid, and, and but, but to put staff through the exercise of, of all of this, if, if, you know, at the end of the day, it if, are they just working, and is it, you know, before we, I feel like we're just jumping three steps ahead with this. Because for all I know, they're, they're working fine.
Leo, can I?
Councillor Marks?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Leo, I just wanted to respond briefly and then really just turn that over to Dan and Clint, because I mean, I guess, you know, what I can say from living in, in the Webster neighborhood is that this isn't a reaction to the most recent noise complaint, it's an ongoing issue that Webster side has been talking about with two town managers now, and that staff has been actively addressing, and I think this is just the next step in a process where there have already been other community meetings in the past, and sort of a statement that there would be, you know, follow-up with the community, so I guess I just see it as an extension, um, but I think Dan and Clint should speak because it is not my understanding that this is council usurping, it's my understanding that council chair and town manager have spoken together and agreed that this would be a good way to move forward. So I think we should hear from Dan and from Clint about whether this is jointly coming from them. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to put Clint on the spot for something that was, you know, clearly something I, I brought forward as a, as a councillor, I will say it's absolutely in response to um, concerns that were in place and meetings that were held and, and results that never seemed to materialize from times from before I was on the council, and if people would indulge, and we've already closed the public, but I know Tom Mitchell is here, who um, I met with over the summer about some concerns, and he suggested to me that he had something he wanted to add, and I, I think we have somebody online, would councillors allow, are we okay with allowing some members of the public to, kept, Tom, do you want to come up? Thank you, Tom. Yep, and if you could introduce yourself and.
Can I be heard? Uh, I'm uh, Thomas Mitchell, and I live at uh, 33 Crosby Street in Webster neighborhood. Uh, and I'd just like to uh, try to convince Councillor Kenny to go along with this. Um, uh, Dan is responding to uh, 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 my, me and my other neighbors. Uh, we, I don't want to, I don't represent my neighborhood, but I would say that we've gone through the process several times repeatedly, and would very much say that it is time for a new process. In particular, uh, in the, what has not worked is what you suggest, which is we complain, uh, and then you send the, our issues to staff, and then we, the neighbors, wait for staff to come up with the uh, magical solution to our problems, we're out of conversation with us. Which leaves us in a position of just waiting for years and years for a response, uh, while staff works. But, which is, there's the, uh, you know, behind closed doors, and then my email is a, is a result of waiting for two years for a report that was promised, and, and not, uh, and I mix, by the way, I'd like to exempt the current members of the council, I, I'm referring to past councillors and past staffs. Uh, yes, that, that's all I'd like to say, so it, this is different from the previous process by uh, in that us residents are in conversation through the process so that we can uh, help you come up with the solutions rather than not be part of the solution-making process, that, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Mitch, you want to pull over the person who's online? Hi, um, is it John?
Yes.
John, you want to introduce yourself and, and um, share with us your thoughts?
Yeah, I am, yeah, of course, um, John Quinn, and I live on the corner of uh, Beach Street in Milt. Um, and just kind of want to direct my comment, uh, a little less towards like the noise complaint, and maybe some of the other functions of this committee with, um, just kind of my support that like, I think having a committee focused on things like nuisance properties and properties that aren't being maintained and, um, are just kind of like yeah, generally, you know, someone's investment but not an investment in the town. Would be a really positive thing, um, particularly as we look at goals towards like housing and whatnot, um, and was also curious if any sort of explorational policy or, um, uh, anything along the lines of like how single-family homes are converted into investment properties or Airbnbs or, you know, short-term rentals. Um, or, like I said, people's investments, but not necessarily investments in the community, um, if that might be something that fell into a committee like this, um, as part of like the bigger picture of, um, both housing uh, as a, as a resource in town, but also, um, where some of these like, someone who doesn't really care about the property cares about the buck they're making off of it. Is kind of packing people into places where it's not really a good fit, and it's not necessarily the student's problem. It impacts the neighbors, but it's not something the neighbor is creating. I think, you know, there's some, some root issues that maybe a committee like this could look at as well.
All right. Thank you, John. Uh, Council Larway has, I think, a response to that second part.
Yeah. So I, I think everything you're raising is really valuable and worth looking at. And I'm in agreement with you in so many of those points. I think as far as this charge that we're about to give to the Community Development Committee, I think I, I don't want to overload. Sort of this particular thing, although I, I see the, the issue around short-term rentals, investments in property, not community. I think all those points are really valid and might be, uh, most effectively channeled through the comprehensive plan committee process that's ongoing. Thinking about our on, you know, longer-term planning for the town and that, which includes housing, includes our ordinances around, I mean, everything you were raising. So I would encourage you to both fill out a survey, uh, there as well as come to any of the meetings. And I'll also keep in mind your comments as the comp plan, uh, committee process is ongoing. But I, I would probably say to council, um, that I'm not sure whether or not these particular issues make sense to load into, um, this order, but, but I'm open to other thoughts.
Yeah, I, I feel like the comp, I think the keeping this narrow, being mindful of the types of questions John raises of it is, is important. But the comp plan discussion is underway and ideally, you know, sequencing this, you know, we hope to have this report back from the committee to the, to the council as we start the, in February, we kind of roll into the policymaking part of the comp plan process. So it'd be good to have sort of an assessment of these things in place as we, you know, move into budget season for next, next, for the next fiscal year. But also as we, to inform the comp planning process as well.
I, I would just again add, Council of DeMarette has, has brought this forward. Through conversations with multiple people, I guess, but the, I think the, the fact is we have a noise control ordinance. We have a disorderly property. We have a rental registration. We have parking ordinances. This, this is nothing, this is not new in Orono and I, I, I live on Mill Street, right, right next to John. I've got plenty of neighbors as well, similar. I, I, we're jumping into, I don't, it's driven by, it's driven by a council member. And I think that typically, I think that should be driven by staff when staff tells us it's not working. Now, if staff says it's working and, and there's, and, and, you know, when you say a couple of years, and I think there's been traffic issues and stuff. I've heard, I think I spoke with you a time or two maybe, but there's traffic and stuff like that, which has nothing to do with this, obviously. And, and it's also, we're in Orono, so we do have turnover each year. So there's, there's that to, to contend with and it is what we contend with. As far as, you know, making sure everyone knows these, I mean, nobody's moving to town reading our ordinances. I can, where I think pretty, say that pretty safely. And I wouldn't expect that they would, but in, in as far as, I don't, I don't know that we're in the game of teaching people hard, how to speak to college students or how to be good neighbors or, or stuff like that feels a little paternalistic to me that.
I, I mean, I, I think, uh, there are ways that we can encourage community building, which involves a lot of those things that can help solve some of these issues. But those are long-term strategic and, you know, like heartfelt planning, um, in a number of ways. But I, I do think it's well within the scope of our, our work and our responsibility to be responding to ongoing issues. We hear from community members year after year. And part of the issue, you're right, is that there's turnover. So even if community is built with this set of college students, still be gone soon. So what are the structures in place? What are the laws that we have in place to, to ensure that regardless of who's there? There are things that we can adequately enforce. There are things that we can adequately, um, rely on to take care of this issue and not just say, it's just how it is. And I, I think it's at least worth, it's at least worth asking, asking the question and seeing, you know, what is this current status of these? Given that we should respond to staff, but we also have a responsibility to respond to our residents. Sorry.
I, I really align with what Rob just said. Because for me, it's just this, this idea that, well, you chose to move into this neighborhood in a college town. You live in a college town. It's, it's not that it's college town or college students. It's that we're a transient town. If we were, you know, in a, in a military base, if we were outside of a military base where thousands of new residents moved into town every year or every, it's, it's hard work and we're seeing it on the Orono Stops Initiative with, uh, you know, working to build a culture of roadway sharing and safety. We have thousands of new residents in our town every single year. And we have to, it's incumbent upon us to reach out, welcome our new neighbors, but i- and do so in a way that, you know, it's, this is the start. This is an assessment, but how do we, how do, how do we signal to them, you know, and have structures in place, have a process in place where we welcome people and to the extent that we can quickly, uh, in, because they are advertising, you know, landlords are advertising for next year's rentals right now. So the work we do to, to help a, a student in the Webster side or in the basin or the tough end, understand kind of, oh, 11 o'clock's quiet time. That work will be done and, you know, maybe it's already done now, but those, those tenants will move on. So this is, it's not just a college town issue. It's a transient issue. And I think we as, I don't, I don't accept the premise that it's just the way it is and there's nothing you can do about it. I don't accept the idea that you just, you know, it's the neighbor's job to confront and challenge behaviors that don't live up to the norms. I, I think the community as a whole has a role to play here. And I, you know, for me, I brought, I brought the order, but I'm bringing the order on behalf of residents and they're going to have, you know, I want them to have a voice and I want them to get an answer. If there's nothing we can do, I promise, promise Tom, I'd give him an answer. You know, he asked me point blank, can I say it? I mean, should I move out of this neighborhood or not? And I said, don't do it yet. Let's see if we can do something about it. And that's, that's what, that's what I think this starts.
But ju- just to clarify, I'm, I'm not suggesting for a second that the answer is that's just the way it is. I'm suggesting that there are policies in place to contend with this and I, I would, I'm under the impression they're working. And if that, but what does that mean? It doesn't mean that my neighbor is not going to be pounding the bass at 11, 11:30. I, you know, that can happen. I, that, that can just happen and I don't expect everyone to fly in and, you know, handle that, but I'm not, I'm not saying it's just the way it is. My, my issue is we have systems and policies in place. I think we should allow staff to do their work and staff to tell us if they need help via policy. Inserting and making promises to neighbors about whether they should move, I think is a, is a, is an overstep in my view. And maybe back to the process, I, I do want to talk about where do we, do we all agree that we're not here to handle, to personally handle complaints that are emailed to us or, or do we think that that is our role? Cause I've always been under the impression that that goes to our chief administrator and the chief administrator handles concerns. We're here if it doesn't work out, but inserting ourself and being, being the one to solve the problem, I think, is not our role. And that's a couple, a month or a couple of months ago, I said, I wanted to talk about roles and responsibilities. And this is kind of hits specifically on what I, I'd like to understand. And maybe I could be the only one that's in thinking the wrong, I'm thinking the wrong way. That it, it is, maybe it is our job to insert ourselves and, and work with residents if they have issues and try and solve them for them. But I don't think it is.
I, I don't see that as what we're doing here though. I mean, the complaints, recent complaints were passed on to the staff and these policies are being acted on. But I think we have a job as the policy setters to examine the policies we have for ongoing issues. Yes, there, there was a catalyst from a particular issue or a, a couple individual complaints. But I, I, I think, I don't know. I mean, I think I've said everything I need, I need to say about it. I mean, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
I, I do hear from, you know, when I do get, I know I'm, Leo, you and I are the two that have the most difference on it. And I, I respect your point of view and I respect that we talk about these things cordially. I do get a lot of administrative things from, you know, we're not, you know, a lot of administrative requests or things from, from town, from residents. And I, I pass those on directly to the manager as, you know, for things, for addressing. So, but this, when things feel like it's a, it's a, an opportunity to build community, to respond to the community. We are the vote, we are the elected representatives of the residents of the town and there's a balance. You know, the check and balance system is, yeah, I definitely want Clinton staff to come to us when they have a concern that, you know, there's a limitation. They don't have the resources to do what we've asked them to do. This policy needs to be improved so we can do better. But I also think it has to come at us from the town too, uh, from the residents. And that's what I think we were elected to do.
So are we elected to resolve a disorder, disorderly or loud property issue? Is that, is that our rule?
I don't think we're like going to people's houses and, 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 and trying to quiet them. Sorry, Sarah.
Good.
No, it's quite okay. No, Matt, you go ahead. I, I just wanted to say that I don't think it's either or, like, I agree that, you know, Leo, I hear your point and I agree with Rob that this is not just an enforcement issue. Clearly it's up to staff to deal with a disorderly conduct complaint in the middle of the night. But it is up to council to take a look at these larger picture ordinance issues and whether our ordinances are working or not. And it's, that's our job as council, regardless of whether staff brings us those concerns or the public brings us those concerns. Ordinance issues fall clearly within our domain. And I think that's all we're asking to do here is to take a look. And I think Leo, it's quite likely that one outcome may be that they get looked at and everyone goes, actually they're fine. They're not a problem. We just have to communicate better with the public what they are because I don't expect anyone to read the ordinances. I like ordinances and they're still hard to understand, right? We need to really simplify and make that a user-friendly communication out. And I also, the last thing I want to say is what I like about this proposal is I really believe we get the best solutions when we get all the voices involved at the table. So I really hope that at these committee meetings, there will be a place for voices of students to be heard, non-students to be heard, renters, owners. People who rent houses they own out to other people. I think the more voices we get involved, the better perspective we'll get on how it's working from everyone's perspective. Maybe it's working great for some groups and not for other groups. Maybe it's not working for anybody, or maybe it's really working okay. And there's only a few exceptions and that'll be easy, easier for staff to fix with more input. So all around, I see it as a plus to get more perspectives, some chances to speak hopefully at these committee meetings and see what we get back. The last thing I want to say is I would love us as a council to also ask for a suggested response back date from the committee. Because I think one thing that came out of kneecap is that that's also important, that things aren't sort of given with an indefinite charge for a specific projects. If other people don't want one, I'm fine with that. But I personally liked what Dan said about maybe this committee could give us at least some preliminary report back. Say by February, when the next stage of the comp plan is happening. And that's the last I'm going to say. Thanks.
Sarah, do you think it would be appropriate? I really, um, liked what you had to say about the form and I want to get off on the right foot with the form. Do you think we could agree tonight to fill out the form based on your, your comment? And come back, you know, act tonight, but bring the form back for a review next week. See if anybody had any changes, like as part of the minutes maybe of the next meeting, to make sure we're all clear.
I think that'd be great. It could be in the minutes so that everyone could look and make sure it says just what council wants it to say.
Sarah, would you be, do you have, I mean, you were so eloquent when you were bringing up your questions before. Did you have those written down?
I had some notes, but I mean, I think Amanda's really good at listening to tape or I can look back and listen to the tape if Amanda doesn't have the time, just, uh, either way.
Uh, Town Manager Deschamps.
Yeah. So I think that's a great suggestion where you're getting to. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of what's being missed here is, is that this review is going to require staff and we should be preparing a report. I mean, you've asked for data, you've asked for information. So I think that's one of the kickoff points that's maybe missing. And, and, uh, I do appreciate on behalf of the resident that shared, this is different council, different staff. Apologies about a report that was due. I have heard it on a few occasions. And I think that's part of the underlying question here is that something got started and never quite got finished. It's been a hectic year or two. So I think there's, I don't think anybody's upset. I don't catch that. I think it's just more of time to get back at it. And so I think as much as possible, if it was, how this committee works, I think the staff assignments to this committee are going to be integral to how this works. Because we need to have something that's workable and adaptable. And, and I don't think we can fix this and I'm going to be careful how I say this. I think we can improve. But this isn't a situation, I mean, it's, it's been here for years for this community. I experienced it as a student. I'm experiencing it now as your town manager. I'm sure future counselors will have with it, but it's probably time for a review, just to see what is and isn't working and how we can improve on what we have. So however you go about it, I think this is something the staff and I are prepared to, to help and make this happen.
Great. I appreciate it. And I, I, I know that there's a strong, you know, we have some really responsible. I spent a lot of time with one of our property owners today. Gave me kind of a master class on what it is to be a landlord in Orono. It was, uh, two hours at Aroma Joe and it was a phenomenal conversation. And I don't want to make the work of anybody who's working hard to provide quality housing in Orono harder. You know, they, they pay their taxes. They're part of the community, but, and, and I want to, but I, I think we'll move ahead. Unless there's something else, we'll move ahead with the vote. We'll come back with the minutes, with the form completed as part of the minutes for us to review. And then as part of our minute review, we can update the, if we missed a data point or something, Sarah, we can update it at that point. Does that make sense? That's perfect. All right. So I think we'll call the question. Like Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council DeMarette? Please in favor. Sorry. I was honestly me basing, that wasn't a joke this time. Counselor Kenny, let me have it. I was thinking about what Counselor Kenny was going to do.
Uh, opposed.
I appreciate you and I respect you. Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
All right. That passes five to one with Counselor Kenny being opposed. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion and thank you for the folks that participated tonight. Next item on our agenda is Order 24229, order assigning the Community Development Committee to discuss review special area management plan, SAM, and a potential collaboration project with the OECD and Jeff Gordon. Can I get a motion, Rob?
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second. I think this will, do you want to take this matter? You want me to? All right. So, um, Jeff Gordon, um, who sat in this seat for a mind-blowing dozen years, I think, as Chair of the Council, 15 years. A real community leader in Orono, um, has been working on the special area management plan. Has asked for time to, uh, brief the council on it, given the work that we, we just did this evening, um, and prior for our committee structure. We responded back that we'd like to assign this to the Community Development Committee where that committee would work, would receive the presentation and report back to council. And we'd include staff, um, in that discussion as well. So that's what this is about. Are there any, I guess, oh, are there any, now that we're done with the presentation, is there any public comment? Is there any questions or comments from council? Okay, we'll move the question. Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council DeMarette's in favor. Counselor Kenny?
Favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Yep.
Okay. Informal yet unanimous vote on 24229.
Dan, can I just ask, Dan, can I ask a quick question? Since this is just process question, since this is the same idea of we're referring a specific task to this committee, will we also see a referral form for this that will show up next week in the minutes?
We will. Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, keep us, you know, it takes a while for new things to, so, yeah. Keep us on task and, you know, thank you.
So, sorry, real quick on that, uh, Sarah and Rob, correct me here if I'm wrong. When we were putting together the, uh, submission form, the process and stuff, I thought it would be the council completing those, not staff. I, we've just given Amanda two things to do in the past 15 minutes. So I want to be.
That's a good point. I thought it was the same, actually.
Yeah. Why don't we get in the practice? I'll happy to, I'll complete these two and run them by, and put them, run them by staff. So I'll go through the minutes and I've got a fancy software program now where I can download the YouTube videos and it creates a summary for me and searchable with AI, which is awesome.
I, I wonder if, um, going forward, um, maybe each of the committee chairs has a stack of these forms. And when things get assigned to their committee, they just take care of it right then. I don't know if that makes any sense or is that?
As long as staff doesn't do, because there could be a lot of, I, I'm hoping there's not, but there may be. So I guess. If it's us asking for things, we should probably do it.
I think it's great if we can fill them out. This form is pretty simple. Staff designed it with what they need from us in order to be sure that they're tracking things correctly. So I think if we follow it, um, we should be giving staff what they want. And I'm happy to also help out, Dan, if you want help on them. I don't think it's hard. Clint, I do want to just defer to you for a minute though. Are you good with counselors filling them out or do you feel like that will make you more work in the end if we don't get? Are you good with counselors filling them out? Or do you feel like that will make you more work in the end if we don't get it right? Which way would you prefer?
I think it's a collaboration. I think if you can start it off and get it, if there's any refinements, but I think that's the way we should kind of approach it. And I, yes, I mean, you approved it tonight. We'll have copies of these here at the future meetings. Same as the creation of a new committee forum, we'll just have them here to fill out. Um, and again, if you've got one that's on the agenda, if you put it forward, you could outline it in advance of the meeting. It could be attachments on the agenda. So we'll, we'll get working on that.
That'd be a good habit to be in. And, um, okay. Next up, order twenty-four, two-three-zero, resolve supporting a route two corridor community, uh, direction and design project. We have, do we have a motion? Or not? Yeah.
Still moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded smoothly. Uh, so we have a resolve on the, uh, Clint, do you want to present this one? My AI system also tells me what speaker speaks the most during a meeting and, um, I don't need AI. I could talk, I could talk less. Yeah.
So I I mean, I think in short, the the Route Two Corridor project's been a long project for the council and community to consider. Um, you're at a point now where you've you've received the concept draft report from Sebago. You've had quite a few workshops, um, and there is a resolve that talks about your goals of a walkable community. Talks about the comp plan, roadway improvements on Route Two for over a decade. Talks about the opportunity for the funding that the main department of transportation in the form of RACE grants is available. Talks about the age of the sewer pipe. Um, discusses that there's a, that we wanted an open process with the community. And then there also is, is that a final design? There was mention of a year. I think we gotta be careful of the year because the RACE grants, depending on when we get our funding. But again, for the community, it's been discussed twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine. Um, depending on how it goes forward, it could be sooner, it could be later. But it's just a rev, uh, rev, uh, resolve that then we take the funds. Um, there is enough money in capital reserves because of the way we funded Webster. And we're not using almost, we're using none of that money now towards that project. It's all coming from ARPA that was left over that we had to allocate before. So there is funds sitting there. Um, it does show a commitment towards the thirty million, three million cost sharing arrangement. But again, we've got to work on that and see what the timings are. So I think the question is, is that as it's in front of you with this resolve, it would be moving forward with the design phase, which is roughly three million with a three hundred thousand dollar local commitment from the town of Orno that is currently in reserves.
Okay. Do we have, thank you. I suppose that concludes the presentation piece. Are there any comments from the public? Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Counsel Baker?
Um, yeah, so quick question. So the order talks about establishing a couple of different, um, groups to talk about, you know, right of ways, et cetera. Um, do we want to wait until MDU, uh, Department of Transportation get involved? Because I'm assuming they will have their own process and groups, you know, including right of way and the butters, et cetera. I I guess I don't, I don't want to establish these groups just to have Department of Transportation say, no, we actually need these.
So in regards to the, let's one at a time on the right away. Um, that was written as a while back. We were at different junctures on how we were going to progress. Um, it is still there. I think right away is still one of those questions in the community. I think step one is going to be have MDOT speak to the community and you may have community representatives as the leaders in garnering that information and listening. Um, I think one of the, as your manager, I would call out the right away discussions are usually confidential and private amongst each landowner. Um, because sometimes landowners don't want their land issues publicly displayed for the community to discuss. So that's the part that I think you just have to work into. This committee would not be able to interject itself in any way into those one-on-one relationships. But I'm seeing it more as a process type committee to get more information on the right away. And then what was the other one? Uh, focus groups. So again, I think that's just about how we're going to work in. Once we know that the design started, there are two junctures in the actual, uh, process. If you look in the historical documents, there's two more public meetings that DOT will hold minimum. And I think this is how we could have some focus groups to kind of bring in some information through those. Um, Bicycle Coalition of Maine had some great feedback. You know, so I think it's just ways that Orno can continue to have its voice represented throughout the design process. That's what I was seeing in the focus group.
So these are to supplement the DOT process, not to
Supplant.
Yes.
And I do think the intentionality of the two different groups, I mean, you know, we talk, it's easy for well, let's not forget the, you know, the Benning and Forest intersection and the traffic flow through that. Make sure that the focus group has, you know, some people who are going to make sure that is is part of the conversation. So we, you know, so we don't get overrun by bicycle bike, bike lanes and stuff, which some, you know, some, we all have different things we want to see in it. We all use the corridor in different ways. And it's important that we have different voices participating and communicating back to their neighborhoods about, you know, what what we're talking about.
Yeah, I I think I'm in favor generally of of these resolutions. Um, I I like that the first of the four on this page, um, highlights, explicitly highlights the need for additional design work in support of a separated bike lane, the corridor, traffic flow improvements, et cetera. Making clear for the community, I think that, um, accepting the report of Sebago is not saying that we're committed to all of the various elements of the the draft plan that they gave us, that there's a lot of, and the rest of these like spell out more specifically what we plan to do to ensure that the community has real opportunity for feedback in an ongoing way as this gets developed because it has an impact on our quality of life in a number of ways, this whole project. So I am interested in understanding a little bit more what the vision is for, um, I guess, timeline of like focus group meetings and same question for the right of way working group, like how long do we envision this existing? How like? Do we have, should we specify more what we think of as the makeup of these groups? What what exactly we're asking them to do? I don't know. There there's, it raises some questions for me.
Clint, I don't have the MDOT timeline yet if we move forward. So that's part of the difficulty we've had. The other piece with this is that um, the planners, uh, the main department of transportation indicated that survey work in the initial phases to begin so they can get to design and soils testing, et cetera, could be in the order of a year. And again, that's so dependent. So you're looking at a lot of prep work in advance before they even begin. Um, so that's where I would say that we would need to work with them on those timelines. And I would say within that one year is where I'm seeing that focus group on right away would kick off. Who constitutes it? Um, we could come back. I mean, these could be seen as a committee and we could discuss at the council how you want it done. I think this resolve gets us started. And we have to create it. And those are things that we can come back now with some um, thoughtful recommendations for the council to to implement on those two. But again, the hard part is is we're guessing until we start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, if I could just say one other, um, yeah, that sounds great, especially just making sure that we're coordinating maybe at every step with main DOT to let them know that we have these groups and that we care very much about. If if we do in fact vote in favor of this, making sure that our community is getting an active voice in the ongoing development of this plan, um, so that it's something that we can feel really good about. Um, I don't want, you know, us to be doing all this work in main DOT to be kind of aware that these things are happening as this continues to to happen. I I want, if we're going to have this, I want to make sure that this is worth people's time. Um, and can be an effective use of people's energy.
Thanks, Rob.
I just, um, I'm still have major concerns that I feel like haven't been addressed, not, you know, the tree, the trees are one thing, but, um, and even even the comment that was just made that we're guessing until we start really feels a lot to me like we've got to pass this budget so we can find out what's in it. And that's kind of the the position we're in for the engineering to to go forward. Um, and we are, um, we are not committing to various elements, but I think it is worth mentioning that this is a state highway ultimately at the end of the day. So our own, our recourse will be to perhaps not participate in our portion, but the design, the engineering, um, right now, there it's been, it's, I I believe where we're at, it's it's only concept, but right now Goodrich Circle has been removed. Right turn only out of Pine Street has been removed. Parallel parking on Mill Street has been removed. Those are some key elements that I think we all want to remove, but I don't think we can like you just said, we're guessing. We can't sit here and say those aren't coming back. Um, and then our, and again, our only recourse after, after a three million dollar, what we're committing to now is a three million dollar engineering phase. And our only recourse would be to not commit our funding portion, which we're talking about committing funding to. The only recourse would be not committing our next stage of funding to the to the build portion. Um, so and and I do think, uh, typically when you're down that, down the path like as that we will be, it's, it's a, it's a kind of when the, when the train's running, it's pretty hard to stop a train. So I I think we, you make, you make, uh, decisions based on already spent money. Um, and well, they've put three million dollars into the engineering. Maybe we can live with these elements that we pretty much, I think unanimously didn't want. And by that time, it could be new council and whatnot as well. Um, but Jacob did share some, some funding that I think would be helpful because I did get a call from, uh, someone in the community saying, hey, I got this information, but it's not really sure what the heck it's saying. So, um, would you be open to, well, you know, I don't know if you have it up on the, on on the, um, or can put it up, but, uh, I think it's important that we do understand what we're talking about spending now and and also what the, what the next, because last week, for everyone that's not in the know, we we did a little exercise where we looked at, we have a, is it three or three point six or four million dollar project, the twenty-twenty-one plan? Was that four million?
The, uh, estimated the time at one point eight, two point four at the time it was funded at federal level, but again.
It it was, which we would have to kick in five. And so was it ultimately a three, a three million dollar project that's been funded and approved? We have money. So we we did an exercise where we looked at one versus the other, um, to the best of our ability. Um, and you know, I don't, it's it's pretty hard to say, did we, did we come to a, did we, did we vet out both of those plans thoroughly? And again, they were both, they're both concept. It's all concept at this point. Uh, did we, did we come away saying, okay, that's, that's worth the extra thirty-one million, thirty-two million that it's going to be for this, this other version. Uh, but we're, we're, that's what we're looking at at this stage. Jacob had had done some, um, number crunching to sort of help show how that impacts taxpayers. Um, and he also did include the other commitment, one commitment, the library that's been already committed to. Um, we do know we have a public safety, as was discussed at the beginning of the meeting, building that I think we've estimated at maybe six million. Um, and Jacob put those numbers together to be able to show the typical homeowner and I guess we, he showed one hundred, two hundred and three hundred thousand dollar homeowners, um, how much their taxes would increase just as a result of these items. Obviously, we didn't look at the fact that we increased our operating budget by a million plus each year or any of that. That's everything else staying exactly stagnant, which doesn't happen, plus what we're talking about adding. So I think it would be useful to share those numbers, um, if that's possible.
They're with the agenda that was posted, right? I don't know, Mitch, do you have the the version? Are you able to share the screen for that? I can see them off Sarah, the reflection, Sarah's glasses, but lean in, Sarah, you gotta lean in really close.
Lean in, there you go.
High-level summary.
Yeah, there it is.
Sorry.
Mitch. Yeah. That was also my warning to let you know, we can see what's on your glasses, I suppose, but
Good. I'm only looking at this.
I know you are. I know you are. I'm teasing. This is, so we posted it. Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
The only clarification I did share out, the the debt in that spreadsheet shows the the library at two point four. We checked the resolve. That was two point six is the commitment on that order. So again, that, again, a couple hundred thousand there. And and when we did discuss this, I think it's a good representation for the community to, when you look at this, is that there's also some debt retirement numbers in the upper right-hand corner of that spreadsheet. So that talks about what the impact is on what we're able to retire. Um, and you are at a current window where this is the last year of some large debt service payments where three seventy-five is coming off annually for debt retirements coming off this year. And then there's another forty-five thousand being added to that in the following year. So four twenty over the next year and a half. Um, and then you don't see a next big jump. And this will be part of the budget process with the council, but you're not seeing another retirement of a significant amount till about twenty thirty-two. And then everything comes off the books by twenty thirty, uh, twenty forty. But again, we got to start talking about capital planning, what we can do with your debt. Is there opportunities for refinancing, you know, some, there's a lot of different tools that we can bring in here to talk about that, that could hopefully reduce the burden on the local taxpayer without overextending our debt on the future councils. But we got to get into this. That's a whole other conversation.
Yep. And we won't be, you know, we won't, we have the funds, the, for the three hundred thousand in in capital reserves right now. We aren't committing the three point six on Route Two until we get to the end of the design phase with the DOT. So we'll have, I mean, nobody wants to play, you know, no one wants to play, um, truth or dare or, you know, or chicken with the main department of transportation. Well, obviously, I think this is a, we'll have a lot of opportunities to engage with them on the design of the project and local feedback. And but ultimately, we'll have an opportunity to to devote, a future council will, on whether or not to commit Orno to to that funding. And there's been talk about that being a a referendum question. And I I'm sure we'll have an opportunity. If if I know the counselors I serve on with now, I know we'll have an opportunity to have that conversation as we get closer to it and I'd welcome it. So Clint?
As you say that, and it was shared by staff today, and I am going to take a chance to say it. There is a state referendum question on this year's ballot that talks about a thirty million dollar trails project with a three million dollar match. That is a state of Maine bond that has nothing to do with the town of Orno. That is not though, but those numbers are so coincidentally exactly what we're talking about with this project that I just think it's a good opportunity to share that we do not have any local bond questions on this year's ballot for the town of of Orno. And, uh, to be aware of that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Good, Sarah.
I, yeah, I I also just wanted to thank Jacob for, you know, putting together this, um, tax impact page and to Leo for highlighting it. And um, I guess I also just want to, you know, highlight for the public that we have said that we're committed to the library project. We're just in discussion phases about Route Two with the three point six. We're taking the next step in that today, but not the three point six. And the public safety discussions haven't even begun. So I do think it's important for me, when I looked at these numbers, I see under a hundred thousand, this a hundred and twenty-five dollar figure um, on the impact that would be yearly. But without the public safety building, that impact is twenty-eight dollars, right? And likewise, for a three hundred thousand dollar house where we have a three seventy-four without the public safety building that we haven't even started talking about yet or come up with solutions about yet. Um, that's about eighty-seven. So I just, I want to be clear that we're not at a stage where we're even committing on Route Two fully. We're taking a step, but we haven't even begun public safety building discussions. And I personally would hope that we as a council would be cognizant of how much debt taxpayers can support and how we may have to space out projects a bit further than we might like in order to make that sustainable. Um, and I think this page is really important for us as we continue those discussions that we've been having and need to continue to have as a council about how to space projects appropriately. Um, and how to eventually get us the things we need while not overburdening our taxpayers. Um, I think this Route Two money is a significant match and I personally was fairly convinced by the discussion last week on benefits we would be getting, especially on the culvert and drainage issues and regulations coming down the line around that, um, that I I'm in favor of moving forward with at this point with the, um, three hundred thousand dollars on the town commitment to move to this next stage. I think we'd be remiss in passing up this much money for problems. It sounds like we are going to have to deal with eventually if we don't do them now.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion before we move to a vote?
Maybe. So I, I think that that's a good point, Sarah, that we're talking about three hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, um, for the match now. But the, I, what I, what I don't like about that is we, we tend to, we, we chunk off and we, and we talk about everything individually. You know, we did that with the library. We just, that was, I mean, we, we had been talking about public work for the public safety building for six months. And then, and then we, then the library thing came up and done. Um, and I don't, we don't, I don't like that we don't take this And I don't we don't I don't like that we don't take this realistic look. And instead, we we suggest, well, it's, you know, we're just committing this now. And then and then it's it's, you know, eating the elephant one bite at a time. And just to to share the numbers on Jacob's sheet, I think for a $300,000 home where you're paying 7,000 in taxes now, your increase would be 576. If everything were the same, which it won't be, but the increase for all three of those projects is five roughly 576 a year.
If we went forward with the public safety building simultaneously, Leo.
Right, yeah.
Which we are nowhere near that stage. So for me, I think we do need to have this discussion as a council, and that's why I like this page and I like you bringing it up. Because we need to be having it that realistically for me, and this is just me, if we move forward with the library and Route 2, I will not be able personally to vote to move forward quickly on a public safety building because we can't support that amount of taxation, in my opinion. Everyone else may be different, but I fully agree with you, Leo, that we need to be transparent about that, that there is a multitude of projects here, and I think we will have to space things out in order to make this supportable to taxpayers. So no disagreement there. I think we all need to be looking at that long term picture and talking about that honestly and transparently with the public.
And and I'll just add that I've in my other duty, I am talking to a lot of residents in in Orno, but also in the entire district. And the biggest concern that I'm hearing out of the gate is property taxes. So this is this is and what happens is we get in the budget season and we look and we look and there's nothing we can do. We, you know, we can't, we can't cut anything. And and this is where that happens, where we maybe take the Taurus instead of the Cadillac plan. But if we choose not to, we choose not to. And we, but again, I I don't like the the situation that we put ourselves in because we're also hearing that the state is at a billion dollar deficit coming up. And and let's remember, everything that we do is less than half of our town budget. We've got the school has also is in the same position where budgets go up every year, and they have to, I get it. But not making these decisions impact our entire budget. And I I don't like it. I don't like making them incrementally like we tend to do.
OK, there are any, thank you, Leo, are there any other comments? Let's move the question then. Councilor Larway?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor, Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor, Councilor Kenny, I didn't. I don't like confrontation. I don't like it when we don't agree.
I'm opposed.
OK, Councilor Kenny's opposed. Councilor Baker?
In favor.
Yeah, I honestly, sorry. All right, that is a vote of five to one with Councilor Kenny voting in opposition. So thank you for the work. Thank you to staff for all of the work, I mean, the the public hearings, the work with the bringing the plans forward, all the questions you answered. I'm I know we're all really grateful for how much, particularly during the transition to a new town manager. So Mitch, thank you for stepping up and and thank you for everybody for all the work you did to bring this forward and everybody who participated in discussion we had so far. Next up is, sorry, Order 231, 24231, the order directing the town manager to develop a plan for council consideration within available state or municipal funds to install rapid rectangular flashing beacons at the intersection of Main Street and Westwood Avenue. Could I have a motion?
It's moved. Second.
OK, Clint, do you have a presentation for us on this? Or Councilor Powers, this was kind of your thing, right? You said, let's put a light out.
You just came out of your last meeting at the end of the Route 2 discussion. Is there funds that we could implement steps now? I've already reached out to MDOT. This is just an order to get it on the record, I think that helps me in that process that you that's where you would like them. There may be others that we can consider, but we got to start. So just bringing it back to clarify your suggestion that probably should be put into council directive.
I would like council to direct this one. Um, does there any member of the public would like to be heard on whether or not we should make it safer for our kids to cross the street to go to school? OK, hearing no, hearing no comments or concerns. Any comments or questions from members of the council?
So will we, is this to find out if we can use those funds that I just referred to? Or or do we think we can?
I've asked. I think we might, but I'm not sure, and we're going to go find out. So we're going to find out what the cost is to do it and what money we might have to do it with.
Because the the other, I mean, that's a that's an important intersection. I just, I don't know if there are, I mean, if the if we're using those funds, I I would be in favor of maybe checking a few other spots. I just think that those lights make a huge difference. And I'd like to see, I I'd like to, if I would say if those funds are available, I would like to consider additional sites.
Could we get a report back, Clint, from you as part of that, and then we'll be able to decide? Now, do you envision as part of this, do you envision? Is this all you need from us and you're going to go get it done?
Well, I mean, the reality is this is going to be over $7,500, and it's not in a budget, so you're going to have to fund it.
OK.
So we'll have to come back, and that's when the report could be presented.
Perfect. OK, Matt, do you have anything for us on it?
Nope, this was just brought to to our attention by a number of people in the community, so thank you, guys.
Yep, great. All right, let's move on it then. Councilor Larway?
In favor.
Councilor Marks? That was it, I said.
In favor.
I read your lips, but I I don't think that's part, I don't think that's public record. Uh, Councilor Demerits in favor, Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
OK, that's a unanimous vote. 223. Now, we're going to go back to item 223 that was pulled off the consent agenda for further information discussion. Item 2423, 223 is an order setting the date of October 21, 2024 at 5:00 PM for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34- Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping Standing and Parking, Section 3495, Prohibited Parking, to address the Margin Street Winter Parking Ban. We have a motion to put it on the table.
It's moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I see Public Works Director Bill Cody coming to the podium, and we will ask him to give us a presentation on this.
Yeah, this is something I brought forward. We have an issue when we come down Henderson. Yeah, and most of you guys have gone down Henderson. It's very steep. We plowed down.
You said, mean Harrison?
Harrison, sorry. We plowed down Harrison and then on to Margin. We've had a couple of close calls. All we're asking to do is just mark it so they can't park over there during the winter months. Summer months, we, you know, that's fine. But the the people asked us to plow to the left of the of the street. We can't when people are parked on that left side of the street, so.
Cool, I just had no idea what it was about, sorry. And and all the idling, stopping, starting, idling, all all that stuff, I didn't didn't understand all of that, so makes sense. Thanks.
I used to live down there. Appreciate your thoughtfulness about it.
Yeah, I guess one of my plow drivers, this is my first year in in town with the plowing, and one of my plow drivers said he just about clipped somebody that was parked there when he was trying to plow down through, so. Appreciate it.
OK, thank you. Any questions or comments from member of the public? Any further questions or comments from the council? And this is just to call the public hearing, so people, do we notice people when we have a public hearing like that? It's not like a planning board item where we have to notice people within 300 feet or whatever. No, OK. All right. So I think the other comment, we'll move on it. This is to call the public hearing, which we have to have before we can we have to have a hearing before we can change laws, apparently, around here. That's the process. So we, Councilor Larway?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Demerits in favor, Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Yeah, that passes unanimously six to zero. Is that that's the end of all the action items, right? Thank you, Amanda. Now we're on to council committee reports. We did that one already. No, we did. Council committee report, Sarah, we were going to talk about NSESIP, the Nominations Evaluation Council Policies and Committees, Committee Charges and Meeting Schedule Discussions.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to say here that we did committee charges earlier. We looked at those, so I don't think there's any further discussion there. For the meeting schedules, Dan, you can speak up if you have a different vision, but the recommendations at this point would be that each committee chair contact your committee members by email to come up with times for your committee to meet. The recommendations, really respecting staff's time, were to attempt to schedule those meetings so that they would end by 6:00 PM, so that staff don't have more nights of the week when they have to be here after hours. And that I think probably they should mostly not be on Mondays since we typically have council meetings on Mondays and sometimes workshops or a moved schedule to first and third Monday instead of second and fourth to avoid holidays. Beyond that, it's really up to council committee chairs to email their group and find out what times would be best to work. I think Clint had suggested at one point, but Clint, correct me if I'm wrong, that it'd be best if those preferred meeting times came to you, since you would know the schedules of the staff liaisons for each of those council committees. I guess we would want probably a first choice and second choice meeting time from each committee, perhaps even a third, so Clint could take a look and come back to us with a schedule that would work. Clint, am I missing anything on that that we're going to need from committee chairs to get that schedule up and running?
No, I don't think there's anything there. There was some suggestion too, as long as there could be a rotation four to five on meeting weeks was for some of the committees might be a good time. If you wanted to meet a little earlier and be right before a council meeting. Again, the action of that day would not make the agenda that night. But again, it would queue it up for the next meeting in two weeks thereafter.
Thanks for catching that. I'm wrong on the Monday thing. That was a previous discussion, so thanks. Monday's fine. Thank you, Clint. At one point, staff had said they would prefer committee meetings to happen on the first and third weeks of the month since council meetings are on the second and fourth, but since that sometimes moves. Do you feel like it would be possible to spread them out over four weeks, Clint? Or do you still feel like it would be best for us to concentrate on first and third Mondays for committees? First and third weeks, sorry, not Mondays.
I think you can spread them out if a committee had an idea that they want to meet at that four to five window before a council meeting. Just indicate that rather than you saying the first, second, third, or fourth, saying, you know what? The first meeting of the month, we could meet four to five. Second meeting of the council of the month, we can meet four to five. We know what that means and where to put that in. But if you want to meet on just a set Monday, too, you know, and that's what it's going to be, we would obviously set it on the off council meeting week, because if you're going to meet at 5:00 on a Monday, the council meets at 5:00 on some Mondays, we would find the Monday where the council's not meeting. So just kind of give us an indication which way you're preferring. The biggest thing is going to be coordinating it. I don't think this is going to be that difficult just to have a set routine schedule, but the biggest part is getting these posted for the public so they know when the committee meets.
So, OK, and so the meeting times can be any day of the week and anytime up until 6:00 PM. Get your ideas to Clint. And I would suggest that we make a commitment that committee chairs do that by a week from today. Does that seem reasonable, Dan, so that you have time to have something in place for the meeting that comes two weeks from today? For a schedule?
I would think so, looking around. I got a thumbs up from down down the other tables. So this was, this is for, this discussion is for the standing meeting, right? So this is for the, I mean, and and we can just to to clarify, the emails back and forth among counselors, these are, this is a logistical item. We're not making policy. We're making a logistical decision. So we're permitted to have those conversations among each other by email without it being a public meeting and and running afoul of those things. But we have, these are for the standing monthly meetings. And if there are time, if there are months where there are no items needing attention, the 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 committee chair can cancel the meeting as needed. We want to give recommendation 25 in the in the NSESIP recommendations we acted, we accepted tonight. You have that language. We also have talked about meeting on a topic specific issues as needed. Or I I guess I raised it in email. How do people feel about, is that part of the recommendation, Sarah? Am I missing that or is that?
Yeah, it's there that the committee can add additional meetings if it's got a specific topic that it really has a time deadline it wants to meet. It can add additional ones. It can hold something in a later hour when it needs to to have more public input. All those things are allowed. This is just for the once a month scheduled meeting of the committee so that the public can expect that the Finance and Operations Committee always meets on the third Tuesdays at 3:00 PM or whatever the time is.
OK, great. So if Matt and I want to schedule a meeting to talk about SAM with Jeff Gordon and the folks behind that, we can do that at 1:00 in the afternoon, some random time. It's not, yeah.
And I also should say, right, I also should say that the recommendations include the fact that meetings will be recorded, committee meetings, although probably audio and not video for ease of staff work time. But all committee meetings will be recorded, so that is posted and available to the public.
We don't have an expectation for minutes from those meetings, right?
No minutes and audio recording and an agenda.
I did that for you. Yeah.
So that's really the first thing, Dan. And the only other thing I would say is there were some recommendations also in the report regarding the environmental committees. And I would just like to flag that I think we should bring that to a future meeting. Their recommendations 30 and 31, which involved officially disbanding the council environmental committee, which hasn't met in a very long time, and renaming the staff environmental committee to just be the environmental committee and officially appointing the members to that committee. So I think that's something we need to work with staff on to bring back to another meeting. But I think it's important to flag that to clean up committee structures, we need to look at that. And also our meeting as a group with the DEIB committee. The charge of the DEIB committee had said that the council would meet with them after a year's time to assess jointly how things are going. And we're past a year. So I think those are two things I just want to flag as far as committee charges that we need to bring back to council. Just to logistically figure out when they're happening and how they're happening.
Yeah, I really appreciate you flagging that stuff for us, and it's, you know, it's important, so thank you. Any questions for this discussion? So council chairs, the committees by Monday. Your preferred work with your work among work amongst yourselves by Monday. Give a couple preferred meeting times to folks, and we'll get it into the agenda as an order. Yeah, I think it's probably in order, right, in order on our next two weeks from now? Because we can vote on things every two weeks, which because of our, yep, that's our structure now. All right. Good. Anything else for this piece? Under the council chairs update, I wanted to share, we got a it's late, quickly, we did get a an email request from a resident, Frederica Smith. Today, we all received it about having all of our meetings here at the dais as opposed to around the table just for audio purposes. That since we're voting at every meeting, I think that makes some sense. And particularly, I think this is a better, I know that this engagement that we have with people on screen is easier from this seat than it is from the tables up back. So I I'm, I'd like to go that direction unless people have an objection. So anybody, OK, that's not a vote, but that seems like a consensus, so we'll do that. And then Clint and I and Sarah, we've been working on, we have to establish council goals. And then ultimately Clint is die, it's it's really, it's it's really interesting how how badly he wants to get a work plan in place and how much I want to see him have that. And frankly, it's going to be helpful for us because we are, we're an ambitious group. So we're going to be working, starting next with our next meeting. And then in November, when we welcome a new counselor, we're going to have, you know, we're going to be working on goal setting and supporting Clint so he can develop a work plan that'll be part of, you know, how we assess, how we assess his work and and work together moving forward. I'm excited to get that done. I know Clint has a lot of great ideas and looking forward to having that that he can he can work with his staff on. So that's kind of, that'll be coming up. And that'll conclude my chairs report, town manager's report, item 11.
So just a couple of things to highlight. With the council meeting minutes and the acceptance of the NSESIP report, we're going to be moving forward with minutes that are motion and vote as opposed to the full detail that you've been receiving. All our minutes are time stamped and the full video audio is there for people to go watch. This gets into a, and it's a more consistent recommendation as the report says for what the Town Clerks Association recommends. Because once you write your full minutes, that becomes the official minutes. And so then it kind of gets rid of everything there, so that's why you got to be very careful how things are worded. This will change that burden, so it'll be a motion vote set of minutes. And then we'll be recommending people that want to see the detailed discussion to go to those. AI conversations might come into this in the future. I went to a few trainings on this. They're not quite ready for it yet. But eventually, there could be some situations where we could use a written record. Or if we are asked to produce, we could go back and have AI pull that to go listen to the video itself. Emerald Ash Bore, I wanted a lot of feedback there, but there is, learn a lot about this. It has been found in Herman, it attacks your ash trees. And we reached out and there's an opportunity for a grant. So I wanted to let you know that Megan Hess is is working to potentially put a grant that would through the Maine Forest Service that would treat one area in as a test area within the town of Orno. And we'll be doing more with this. If this does become a problem, it is something we have to aggressively treat. um, because of how it attacks your ash trees and kills them. Uh, so that's your heads up. When that comes back, that would be an approval of a grant. At this point, it appears there'd be no match, but you would still have to accept it. Um, I did share out the valuation. We get a letter every year from the state, talks about the valuation of the town compared to everybody else in the county. They do it across all the counties. I shared that with the council, if anybody, the public wants it. But again, it, it does set up, like our county taxes are based upon our valuation, revenue sharings, different things are all used. So it just gives you an idea of what the valuation is. It is required for the state to notify us of that each year. And they do a lot of work with the assessing office to determine those valuations. And it also affects school funding, as in other things. So it's just something that I get in the habit of share. We keep them on record. Um, and we'll probably talk more about that during the budget process. Wanted to share, we gave you an election handout, just to summarize what's going on, the clerk's office, that's available to the public as well. Um, just wanted to make sure the council had a copy of that and saw it. And the only agenda that's something that's new has come up that I shared out today, but I'm working with the library on the 1021 meeting. I'd like to bring in Haley Ward is the contract for design, and I'd like to have the council consider uh, naming the library and the foundation as the owner's representative in the phase one contract. We're splitting construction and design into two parts, letting, um, Bill Cody, on behalf of Public Works, with Lori as the head of the library, work with the foundation on those design decisions, and we'll keep you updated throughout and with those budgets. But again, um, since we will be and are the owners of the building, um, I think the council authorizing those contracts would make the most sense. So we're getting representatives here for the 21st set up, so you can do that and vote on that. And that is all I have.
Excellent report. Thank you. Oh, Council Baker?
Yeah, real quick, the Ash Bore, um, so my parents live in upstate New York. I'm from there, and, um, it started about 10 years ago, and all of the ash tree, all of the ash trees are now dead. Um, so unfortunately, whether it hits us next year, the year after, it's going to hit us. And, um, in addition to costing, I, we as a town also need to begin to think about budgeting for cleanup and because I know, you know, at least along my street, it's lined with ash trees that likely will all die. So we need to, as a town, be able to take care of them and, um, cut up the stumps. Now, it's just that, I mean, in upstate New York, there's just patches of, there's, you can't stop it, so it's unfortunately a real issue, so. It'll be a financial issue for us eventually, too.
I do appreciate, um, the proactiveness of our staff and seeing what we can do. Um, but we did also get a presentation, I mean, that maybe it was already a year ago, uh, about sort of the, the general sort of canopy that we have and what, what can be done to, uh, deal with the fact of, uh, the major loss that we're going to experience, um, to make sure that we're replenishing our canopy with, you know, sustainable trees.
That's very uplifting, Jacob. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thanks for that.
I had a question. Were there any surprises or major changes to the, uh, valuation piece? And I got, that's why I'd asked back. It was four pages. I did not have time to read it, so I just wanted to know if there are any highlights or areas of concern, uh, with that report.
No, I think the biggest thing is when we work as a council and how I prepare budgets with you, this is gonna be a topic for conversation. You know, a lot of this, uh, you know, you talk about whether taxes are high or low. But again, you gotta remember that the taxes of this community are a reflection of the amount of money you spend for the services you want compared to the value of the town. If the town were worth more, your taxes would be worth, would be lower, because it'd be shared over a broader amount. So this will be, is kind of the beginning of me sharing with you, to get used to seeing the valuation of the community, understand its historical changes, and how that's affected your taxes in this community, and that's why I wanted to share it out that way. But no, nothing alarming at all on our valuation.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, we have, we don't have any public petitions. Are there any future agenda items and council requests for supporting items? Sarah raised a couple coming out of the NSES recommendations that we'll have in the hopper. Anything else from anybody else? You wanna talk about the parking lot thing, or?
Dan?
Yeah.
Would it also, would it also be appropriate here to just cycle back to our earliest discussion in the meeting practically, where there was some discussion about wanting to maybe hear from staff about if there was a Orno, um, festival days again in the fall, like what that would look like and what that might cost? I don't know that that's urgent, but I mean, I did hear it brought up, and things come up on us fast, so maybe it's good to flag it that, um, maybe I'm off, but I thought I heard people saying at the beginning that in addition to Arts Fest, they were interested to know whether, or at least some counselors were interested to know whether an Orno Arts Festival in the fall might be possible. All other people speak for themselves. Just wanted to flag that we talked about it and haven't officially asked anything about it.
Great catch. I, I would be in favor of having that on an agenda item to discuss.
Yeah, I would, I'm happy to discuss it. I think we, you know, unless someone steps forward, as a member of the community steps forward and really is, really we're gonna do it, we're gonna have to discuss how do we resource it, and it feels like that's part of what you want to talk about, too.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to bring up, because the last time we talked about it, we had been given a quote from staff. I believe it was a $10,000 quote for staff to run that. And, you know, if that's, I think that was two years ago, and a quote that was given to council, but I could be off, I could be wrong. And I think it's important to just have those figures there and a sense of that as we continue to talk. I, if there isn't no one volunteering to step forward and run that in the community, then that falls on staff. And if that figure is exactly what it was, then we just need to be told that, and whether staff really have the bandwidth for that or not, you know, coming up in the near future. And if not, it, council wants it, it's something we have to plan for, right? In staff time as well as money into the future. So I don't know what the conversation would be, but I think some update would not be bad.
I would, I would say staff or consultant time. I, I look at, I look at our staff and, um, we, yeah, I just, I look at that in terms of, yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Yeah.
People we pay to do things.
So what does that mean for us? Are we just, we're gonna push this to make sure that we discuss it again, maybe with some more information from staff about how we might go about, uh, supporting or not supporting something?
Well, we could, you know, I mean, we, we're getting really close to having goals and a work plan with Clint. Maybe that is, I mean, I don't think we're doing anything. It feels like we'd be a year away. You know, Matt and I and Clint met with, um, with some student affairs leaders at Humania, you know, last week, late last week. I think it was a fantastic conversation. You know, maybe it's in that mix, and maybe we refer it to either, we could refer it to, we should do something formally, right? Where we refer something to one of the committees, or make it, ask, make it a council goal, and it becomes part of Clint's work plan, and, but then we gotta resource him for it, and, you know, we have to have that expectation that he's gonna ask us for the funds, the resources he needs to, to pursue it, so. I could, let's have it as a discussion item next week, next time. All right, so that way, good.
So I guess the, the other one was, um, been approached by folks, uh, in town. Uh, we had a, I guess, a town icon that had passed about, almost a year ago now, uh, Bruce Farnsworth, uh, owner of Pat's Pizza. And, um, the thought was that it would be appropriate to name something or do, do something, um, in his name in town, and I, I would like to have a formal discussion about that, um, what we, what we might do, um, along those lines. I don't know if.
We looked through, um, we can do it by order. Staff today was able to, um, I appreciate Leo, you know, bringing this forward to us and, and sticking with it. We got some feedback from staff. Amanda, that sounds like, I'm, I'm looking at Clint, but I know, I really know who did it, who found it, right? This is like the be nice to Amanda meeting. We're all trying to go out of our way to, so thank you for all you do. Um, but we, there's a, there's a little, there's a little garden outside of Taco Rita, um, in, in Pat Farnsworth's honor. And we could do something similar, and Bruce was, you know, when we first started talking about it, the parking lot behind Pat's Pizza, and Bruce was apparently a, I won't say, I'm gonna say.
Ardent supporter of the parking lot.
Ardent supporter of parking in Orno, and frankly, we have some discussions to have in Orno as we do the Route Two stuff. We're gonna have conversations. So I, you know, Leo and I were discussing between the two of us, which is appropriate, bringing in the order before us next time, at the next meeting, uh, potentially name the, the lot for, for Bruce. What?
I'm thinking of the dumpsters and grease traps and everything else in that parking lot.
The nice part of the parking lot.
That parking lot is, if you're a Farnsworth, that parking lot is gold. So, um, yeah, if that, you know, but that, Carolyn is actually interested in it, and I, I like it. So we're gonna have that at the next meeting. If people have other ideas, weigh in, but that's coming at you, I guess, so. And we're excited to recognize a, a community member who's had a big impact on Orno. Okay, great. Any other, um, future agenda items and council requests for supporting items? I'd like to request that Jamie put the salmon in the oven if she's watching, because we're almost done. Anything else? Okay, and do we need the executive session, Clint?
It would be very.
Public, yes, what's that?
Yes.
Okay, so public, final public comment for the evening? Anyone who has something to talk about that? If unbelievably, we didn't get it covered today, and you want to talk about it, now's a good time. All set, Mitch? Thanks. And that, we are gonna move, I'll take a motion, we're gonna move into executive session, there'll be nothing, no council action after executive session, right, Clint?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
So we're suing the MRS, Section 405, 6A, Personnel Matter. Council Larway moves, we move into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moves in seconded. All those in favor, we gotta vote.
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Demerit? In favor. Council, I'm so, I'm, I'm, Council Kenny is in favor. Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Baker? Okay, thank you, and we will have no further, uh, business when we come out of executive session. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, staff.